And happy Tuesday to you. Today is Tuesday, March the 5th. That's right, March the 5th. We are easing on down the road, absolutely. March the 5th, 2024. We are here at 901 Main Street in the heart of Old Town Conyers, and we're calling our meeting to order this morning, Commissioners. There are no special recognitions this morning, and we will go right into Agenda Review.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 122 on the agenda for next week is the Association County Commissioners of Georgia, ACCG Civic Affairs Foundation Incorporated through the Planning and Development Department, for a General Georgia County Internship Program for the Planning and Development Intern Grant. It's an intern to be a direct aide in the Community Outreach Program called PND Panda. The amount is $3,259.50 with no match. The term is May 1st, 2024 through September 1st, 2024.
Okay.
Item 123 is with the Georgia Recreation and Parks Association through the Parks and Recreation Senior Services Division. This is for the Intergenerational Art Show Grant Application. The amount is $1,000 with no match. The term is April 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024.
Okay.
Item 124 is with Color Book LLC through the Parks and Recreation Department for the use of South Rockdale Park located at 3909 East Fairview Road in Stockbridge, Georgia for the crew parking while producing a project titled Color Book. The amount is $500 in revenue. The term is February 17th, 2024, and this is submitted for ratification next Tuesday. Item 125 is with Pro Fence through the General Services Department for on-call fencing for various county projects. It's a unit price contract with one year with option to renew two additional one-year periods. Item 126 is with Southeastern Security Professionals through the General Services Department for alarm monitoring service for county facilities. It's a unit price contract. It's one year with option to renew three additional 12-month periods. Item 127 is with Building Maintenance Services through the General Services Department for janitorial custodial services at various county locations. This is a unit price contract. It's change order number one, a Contract 2023-173. It's an additional $2,635 per month to cover additional facilities. The current cost is $8,937.51 per month. It's for 12 months with option to renew two additional 12-month periods. Item 128 is with Comcast Enterprise through the Technology Services Department for ENS Circuit Fiber Service at Fire Station Number 10. The amount is $430.92 per month with a total of $25,855.20 for 60 months. Item 129 is with Bill Carruthers through the Board of Commissioners Office for the Stepping Up Initiative. This is change order number one, a Contract 2022-197 for additional funds in the amount of $10,800 to cover the 2023 overage. Item 130 is with Tanisha Character through the Board of Commissioners Office for the Stepping Up Initiative Education, Marketing, Outreach, and Community Engagement. This is change order number one to Contract 2022-196. It's for additional funds of $5,475 to cover the 2023 overage. Item 131 is with Motorola Solutions through the Emergency Management Agency Department for 2024 Motorola Radio Subscriber Service Agreement Renewal. This is change order number three to Contract 2020-146. It's an increase of $4,429.67. The new contract cost is $78,568.40. The term is January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024, and it's through the Emergency 911 Tower Fund. Item 132 is with Yancey Brothers Court, Yancey's Brother Company doing business as Yancey Bus Sales and Service through the Sheriff's Office. This is for a 46-passenger inmate transport bus. The amount is $320,689. This is a one-time purchase, and it's host-funded. Item 133 is with Angelique's Global Coachment and Consulting Firm through the Juvenile Court Accountability Court. This is for substance use treatment groups. The amount is $200 per a 90-minute group. It's through September 30th, 2024 with option to renew two additional 12-month periods. This is grant-funded. Item 134 is with Tabitha, is with Tabitha Gaspinoza through the Juvenile Court Accountability Court. This is for substance use treatment groups. The amount is $200 per 90-minute group through September 30th, 2024 with option to renew two additional 12-month periods. This is grant-funded. Item 135 is a requisition through the General Services Department for game time care of Domenica Recreation Products. This is a proposal for a new amphitheater at Wheeler Park. The amount is $127,575, and this is impact fee-funded.
So I wondered if we could get more information on that?
Director Redman is here, and he and Director Hammer, between the two of them, I'm sure they can, they usually, they're such brothers.
Yes.
See, I'm trusting better, too. I had to keep up with my brothers. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners.
Good morning.
So this amphitheater is a 20-foot by 30-foot amphitheater. It's sort of a stage. It'll be on the corner. If you remember where the baseball backstop used to be on the left side, so closest to the building where Restoration Storehouse is, and it'll face kind of sort of catty corner out into the park. We'll have power there set up for bands, for productions that'll feed off of the main building, electrical. And I was looking in the requisition to see if it had a picture in there, and unfortunately it didn't, but I can shoot that to you if you want. I can email it. You can see what it'll look like.
Okay, so what's it made out of?
It'll be metal, metal structure, metal roof, and it'll have, I think we're going to put some signage on it as well on the front. Yes, yes, ma'am.
And how many people will it seat?
So, let me let you talk about that.
Good morning, Commissioners, Madam.
Good morning.
Chairman, Madam Commissioners. So this is for the bands to play under. So normally, we rent a stage. So this will alleviate us renting the stage for a long-term cost. It'll save us in the long term. Our plan is to move the Summer Concert Series to Wheeler Park. So this helps us with logistics and not having to drive. Because to put that stage up there, you have to get a truck. They have to drive up the curb, yada, yada, yada. So we want to put something in place permanent to be able to host the shows there.
Okay, so this won't be for spectators or citizens? This will be for the, whosever's on the production, the stage, the band, the DJ, or whomever's going to be hosting any event?
So we still have to bring our lawn chairs?
Still have to bring your lawn chair.
Yes, still have to bring your lawn chair. Like the Chairman said, this is for the people who will be performing, for them to have something that they can sit under that provides some type of protection from the sun for them and electricity, like Director Hammer said. Previously, we have to hook up generators. So this will just alleviate a lot of small nuances that we deal with when doing performances.
So this $127,000 is the total cost for all of that setup and electrical and everything?
That's correct. The concrete, the steel, the, yes, that's correct.
Okay, so are we planting trees so people have shade?
We are not planting trees, but we did talk about the umbrella. I think you mentioned this at a previous board meeting with allowing patrons to use umbrellas right before the show starts, and as the show started, they would have to lower them. The shows would start as the sun is going down, so we put that into thought as we planned the shows. They normally start around 6:00, 5:30, 6:00 in the summertime when it's starting to, the sun's starting to go down.
Yeah, and one of the things I noticed out at Costly Mill, you know, last year was our biggest turnout year. A lot of our citizens brought those fancy chairs that have the built-in shade hood. It's already on. I saw several of them last year to kind of protect themselves from the sun. But the Director is absolutely correct. By the time we start the production, the sun is shifting and it's coming down. The other thing about the umbrellas, because we noticed that last year, when you put an umbrella up, then you're blocking somebody else's view. Then they've got to get Parks and Rec to get involved with the dispute over whose umbrella is blocking who. But certainly, those chairs, lawn chairs, that when you, that has the built-in canopy. It's really what it is. It's a built-in canopy. It's got your cute little cup holder for your beverage, and it's positioned where folks can still see the stage and see. Listen, I think all of this, you know, we talked last year, Commissioners, about arts, culture, and entertainment and spreading our wings. This is a part of the collaboration between Parks and Recreation and General Services to move in that direction. The other part about bringing particularly the Summer Concert Series, pulling it away from Costly Mill, bringing it to a more centralized location, better traffic flow on Parker Road, you just can't beat that. And the parking on Parker Road is just almost unlimited. But even with, as you know, yes, we, the county, owns Parker Road, but it's located in the city of Conyers. So we coordinate between the City Police Department with traffic control as well as the Sheriff's deputies that may be available at that particular time. But it's inside of the city. In addition to that, Chief Mack started dispatching her bike medics and having them on-site so we don't have to wait if there's any kind of incident. We already have EMT and paramedics right there on-site. This whole arts, culture, and entertainment, this is what the folks are talking about. Once we get that division completely solidified, we'll be able to go after grant funds so we can start bringing in, again, the Paddy LaBelle's and the Charlie Wilsons. But those folks, they're not even going to clear their throat for $10,000 and rock their county. They're not getting, Paddy LaBelle will not sing, she won't even clear her, she won't say, "Mm", for $10,000. So we've got to have grant funds to be able to get those big-name artists out here. But what I do appreciate, and I wrap this up, between Director Hammer and Director Redman, they're already starting, being proactive with the planning and the logistics. You don't want to wait until you have it in your hand. Now is the time to start shifting the crowd, bringing them out of Costly Mill, putting them on Parker Road. I'm telling you, I think really everybody's going to appreciate the parking, the free flow, and I think for the law enforcement, it's going to give them a lot better control of being able to control the traffic out there on Parker Road. But then that flat land will allow everybody to see the stage and the performers on this raised platform that's going to be permanent. And then it gives us options, too, Commissioner. We can host. Having this permanent fixture, we'll be able to host multiple events beyond this in the future going down the road. Director Redman, anything else you want to add to that?
No, sir. You touched on everything. That is true. We took into consideration the traffic control. Like you said, it's a four-lane road, so that makes it better for traffic and flow, traffic flow, and it's not as dangerous as 138. We, you know, it was really, it took a lot of focus to let people out of the park on 138 after the concerts were over, stopping traffic on 138. All 18 wheelers are coming down, so we're just really looking forward to getting it in a better location.
And Lord forbid if we had a summer rain like we did last year. We had a couple of storms that really made it super dangerous. Director Hammer, any additional comments from your direction?
The only thing I would say, it's going to be a fantastic addition to the park. This is the same park. We're going to have the skate park, a playground, a pavilion. We just installed the pickleball. We have the fitness court. So this is, just golf, that's right. Thank you. So this is going to be, I would say, one of our premier parks in the county. And having an amphitheater there just kind of puts icing on the cake for that.
So what is the timeline?
I believe they have a lead time. I'll have to check on that. We're probably looking, probably middle of summer when we get it out there. We're going to try to push them to do it earlier so we can maybe relocate some of the concerts this year, but that'll depend on steel supplies, so.
So there's a possibility that our summer concerts will continue to start out at Costly until this is completely done. Maybe the last one, we may shift out to Parker Road if everything is complete, but we got to get started, so this is a start to move in that direction. So don't want to confuse folks. Right now, we're still at Costly Mill. Until this is complete, we may be able to shift out to Parker Road at the latter part of the construction for the amphitheater. Absolutely. Commissioner Washington, any thoughts on this at all?
I'm clear.
You're clear?
Clear.
All right, very good. Thank you, Directors. Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Okay, Item 136 is a requisition through the General Services Department for prime contractors for supply and install of TPO roof at the EMA building. The amount is $58,393.62. Item 137 is a requisition through the General Services Department for affordable interior systems doing business as AIS. Care of impact office interiors. This is for new furniture for employee offices at the RDOT. The amount is $41,706, and this will be submitted for ratification. Item 138 is a requisition for the Parks and Recreation Department through the Senior Services Division for Clara's Healthcare for Clara's Companion Products. The amount is $20,180, and this is ARPA-funded. Item 139 is a requisition through the Water Resources Department through the water treatment plant for tech equipment formerly known as Echotech. This is for tech equipment triplex for duty triple discharge wall or floor-mounted pump skid in the amount of $29,400. Item 140 is a requisition through the Water Resources Department Sewer Collections for Core and Main for sewer ring and covers. The amount is $15,200. Item 141 is an expenditure request for corporate environmental risk management through the Water Resources Department for Water Resources Engineering Staff Augmentation. The amount is $93,577.50, and this will be submitted for ratification. Item 142 is an expenditure request for Tyler Technologies for Clerk of Superior Court, the annual maintenance and support for all divisions using Odyssey. The amount is $59,049.90. Item 143 is a resolution of Rockdale County adopting the 2024 Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan of date of February 5th, 2024. Item 144 is a special use permit case 2024-01 in ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended to authorize a special use permit for outdoor recreation facilities, wedding venue at 2200 Smyrna Road Southwest, Conyers, Georgia 30094. To repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes, this will be submitted for a second reading next Tuesday. Item 145 is rezoning case 2024-01 in ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning 2599 Stanton Road Southeast from R1 Single Family Residential to AR Agricultural Residential. To impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes, this will be submitted for a second reading next Tuesday. Item 146 is future land use map case 2023-02 in ordinance to amend the future land use map of Rockdale County, Georgia's comprehensive plan as amended so as to re-designate property located at Northwest Ebenezer and Zero Highway 138 from the Office Institutional Future Land Use category to the High Density Future Land Use category. To repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes, this will be submitted for a second reading next Tuesday. Item 147 is rezoning case 2023-09 in ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning Northwest Ebenezer and Zero Highway 138 from AR Agricultural Residential District to MRU Mixed Residential Use District. To impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes, this will be submitted for a second reading next Tuesday.
Okay, all right. Okay, Commissioners, we're down to public comment.
So, Mr. Chairman, I have not received any red cards this morning if anyone wishes to speak.
Okay, we'll move on to board comment, and we'll start with Commissioner Washington.
Well, goodness, Chairman. This is like the second meeting this year that you've presided. We've been doing good on time for both of those little, um...
We're not done yet.
I know, right? The hourglass has worked, though. He sees them sitting there. That's a reminder. No, the first thing, I want to once again commend our Finance Department. First, I presented the audits to a group on, I think, not this past Sunday, but Saturday, but the Saturday before that, and it was so well-received. You know, a lot of times, I think people want to hear all of the good news that are going out in the county, so I've asked them to print some more of those books so that we can start just giving them out because the fact that we did receive, I think, for the 13th consecutive year, the award for excellence in reporting went over so well, and, you know, just people wanted to hear how good our Finance Department is actually doing. That on top of, yesterday, we had the meeting with Moody's for our rating, and when I tell you, I was so proud of all of the work that Finance has done, but just the county in general, because we had auditors there and the people that were, that were the underwriters there, and they were saying that it's very rare that the rating professionals come in and have so little questions about the operations of a county. So we're looking, it looks like we're going to be sitting pretty good when we let those bond, so I'm very, very proud. But we should, as a county, be very proud of our Finance Department and the things that we've done to show that we're fiscally responsible. That being said, I want to also, once again, commend Parks and Rec. You know, a lot of people have given us many things that they think that we should be doing with the park on Wheeler Road. But the things that are actually going to, that are happening to that park are amazing. It's truly becoming a premier park and a destination. It is becoming what it is supposed to be, which is... It's, it is becoming what it is supposed to be, which is a premier park. So, um, thank you, uh, commend, um, Director Redman, Director Hammer, for you all's, um, dynamic dualship in making sure that, um, park becomes what it, it, what is the, it's, the vision is becoming a reality, and it's good to see that. Um, finally, I do want to address a couple of things. Uh, you know, we had our call meeting on our, the raises and the, uh, other, uh, economic development initiatives that were on the agenda. And there were a couple of things that I think need to be clarified from that meeting that we didn't talk about that night. Um, to me, the number one thing is that the perception is that we came and gave ourselves raises. The reality is that we, the raises weren't just for us. They were for your Tax Commissioner, your District Attorney, your Sheriff, your Clerk of Court. All of them will receive their raises this July. That's why we did this. The Chairman and I have to win a relec, that raises for the seat. We have to win an election in order to get those raises. We believe that the work that is being done in these seats deserve more compensation. Because this seat, starting when he was here, is not just a part-time seat anymore. We work full-time, and we, we put our hearts into this seat. Um, but like I said, we had to win an election, that doesn't go into effect until January. There's statutorily a timeline that we have to do it. So we did it within those timelines, but, um, we knew that there was going to be some pushback. But I wanted to clarify that, that the other people, your Sheriff definitely deserves more compensation. Your Clerk of Court, your Tax Commissioner, your District Attorney, all of them are getting their raises in July. And they darn sure deserve more compensation so that they're making what the other people that are similarly doing similar jobs are doing. The other thing that I thought that was almost negligently brought up, um, about those, about us was that it was due to our negligence that our, our insurance premium has gone up. Um, when the, it, it, the perception was that we're doing things that are making our insurance premium going up and costing the county. The reality is that our insurance premium has gone up for two reasons. The number one reason is because we have more, um, Sheriff's deputies that have the power, you know, they have, they're carrying weapons. What that means is that we have increased the number of Sheriff's deputies on the street, we are keeping you safe. The second, um, reason is because our, our personnel costs have gone up. Meaning that we finally get to put people in the seats to do the business of the county. And so those are the, the main two reasons why our insurance premiums have gone up. Not because we're being negligent, but because we're doing the things that it takes to run this county. So I just wanted to make those things clear to the people who may have seen the, um, the meeting and may have had questions. But those are the things that were bothering me from that meeting. So now I can sleep at night. That's all I have.
Right, Commissioner Williams?
Okay, um, several things, let me get my notes here. Last week I attended a Alzheimer's First Responder Training, which was really interesting. It was hosted by Latasha Emery of Always Best Care. And John Clark of the Georgia Emergency Search and Rescue, um, Organization was the instructor. Um, he gave a lot of really interesting information. You probably all got a little note yesterday about a senior man, an older man who was missing. I don't know what happened to that, I, we, there wasn't any follow-up. But, um, when the search and rescue get involved, one of the things he said is, when someone's missing, don't wait several hours, call immediately. Then they'll sit down and they'll talk with you about what does this, what is the history of this person? Maybe they've, they think they're going to work and they've gone back to a former place of employment. Or maybe they think it's a, a different day of the week and they're going to their church or something like that. But he said, most people are found, uh, a lot of them are found within a very close proximity to their house, if they are called early. Um, over a hundred and fifty thousand people in Georgia live with Alzheimer's. And of course, that's not the only form of dementia, there are other forms too. Sixty percent of them will wander. And forty-six percent of those that wander will become seriously injured or worse. Um, and so that's why that is so important to call immediately. You know, sometimes people think, well, they're walking, that, you know, they often leave and, and walk, we'll, we'll be able to find them. But he said, that's just not the correct way to be thinking. There are several technologies that can be used, uh, to track them. Um, and, and some of them are not walking, some of them are driving. Um, and, and that was my question yesterday was, is this person on foot? Is this person in a car? If so, what car, kind of car? Uh, where were, are they missing from and how long have they been missing? There wasn't really quite as much information as I thought there, you know, could have been. Um, so reach out to law enforcement right away. Secondly, I was able to go to a BEAMS event. BEAMS is something that our local, uh, UGA Extension 4H Group puts on. And, um, well, this was the first one since the pandemic that they had done, but they had done a couple before the pandemic. BEAMS stands for Building Education Around Mental Services. And it's for, it was for sixth through twelfth grade students and their parents. So there were classes for parents and classes for kids. And I think I mentioned before that the numbers of youth reporter, self-reporting depression and anxiety has gone way up. And so this is, um, uh, an effort on the part of our 4H extent, uh, our Extension Services to support those students and to give them education as well as their parents and resources also. Um, the first one was held in two thousand nineteen and, uh, it was started because of a grant that was acquired from Morehouse, uh, School of Medicine. Then, uh, yesterday, um, I was not able to attend, but, uh, Ms. Goldston did attend. It was the Mental Health First Aid Training, and this one was for adults. I looked at the, um, picture that she sent out, and a number of our, um, Accountability Court people of our, um, opening doors to recovery people, our stepping up initiative people were involved in that mental health first aid training. It was, it, I have done the one for youth, but this was for adults. Um, and I would encourage everybody when that opportunity arises to take that training. Um, we are in a critical need area right now. Um, eighteen, I think the statistics on the news last night were suicide is now the, for prime, uh, cause of death for eighteen to forty-five year olds. Um, surpassing accidents and, and, uh, heart disease and some of those other things. So, um, it, it becomes, you know, sort of like we've, we've take for granted first aid training, physical health first aid training, because we know that we may not need it, but at some time, we may need that. And CPR training. I think we're in a, in a situation, in a, an era where we need to be prepared with mental health first training also. It, um, provides basic knowledge and skills to respond to someone who's in distress. Um, I think that is all that I have this morning.
All right, all right, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Washington, any, uh, thought provoking, uh, ideas after Dr. Williams?
Not today.
All right, okay, all right, well, I have a few, uh, Directors to call up. We've got a lot of exciting things happening all throughout the county. Our folks are out hitting the streets and doing a lot of work. But I do want to start with a couple of things, and I'm going to start with, uh, Director Redman. Come on up, Director Redman, and, and tell us about, uh, what's going on, uh, out in Parks and Recreation this year. Easter comes early.
Good morning again.
Good morning again.
Uh, first, I want to touch on the, uh, summer concert additions. We were talking about the amphitheater earlier. Uh, right now, we are still accepting auditions for the summer concert series. Uh, we get a lot of inquiries about how do we choose the bands? We do this every year, we open it up for auditions. Uh, the bands or groups have to send in a three-minute video, it's a flyer on the screen. They have to send a three-minute video in, and we review the videos as a, um, collective group to decide which bands we will use for the summer concert series. So we're still accepting auditions until March the fifteenth. Uh, you can submit them to, uh, alandria Bing at, alandria Bing at rockdalecountyga.gov or lavanda bruton at rockdalecountyga.gov.
How do you get to be on the selection committee?
Uh, all you got to do is send me a, a message and you can come on and join us.
Oh, okay.
The more eyes, the better, and the more ears. Look at the chairman. Uh, next, I want to talk about, uh, youth flag football and cheerleading. We are still registering for that as well. Uh, that registration ends on March the fifteenth. That is, uh, for ages five to twelve. It is a six-week seizing, season with a postseason tournament. The first game is scheduled to begin on April the twentieth. Um, when parents register, it is very important to know that you have to bring that birth certificate to us. We don't want the kid on the field with a mustache playing, so we have to verify that ages are correct. So you have to turn in that birth certificate. We get a lot of pushback about it, I don't, I'm like, we need the original birth certificate so we can make.
Director Redman, that was pretty drastic. That, that.
You haven't seen Little League World Series, Chairman? Some old guys been throwing that ball, man, they're questionable.
They got mustaches.
With the little kids.
And the little kids.
Oh, my goodness.
Chairman, there's a lot of head modding out here, so apparently this happens.
They're witnesses.
So what's required, what's the primary document?
The primary documentation, we do need the, uh, you have to fill out the, um, all the supporting documentation, but it's very important that we get that birth certificate from the parent.
Okay.
Very important.
All right.
All right, and then, um.
With the raise seal.
Yes.
It can't be a copy.
I would be surprised if we've gotten. Um, next, I want to touch on the Easter Extravaganza. Uh, when I was little, we just had an Easter egg hunt. Now in twenty twenty-four, we have Easter Extravaganza's. So, um, this would be, um, Saturday, March the thirtieth, uh, from eleven AM to two PM at Costley Mill Park. The address for that is twenty five ninety-nine Salem Church Road, Conyers, Georgia, three zero zero one three. Uh, features pictures, pictures with the Easter bunny, face painting, uh, the admission is free. Uh, we are partnering with Rockdale, uh, Water Resources and the Sheriff's, um, Office for this event.
Okay.
Uh, lastly, we have a video coming up about the Senior Center. I believe it's queued, I was trying to save that for last to give them some time to pull it up for me.
So the last time you had the, uh, uh, right before they played that, the last time you had the Easter Egg Extravaganza out at Costley Mill, you had a lot of people.
A lot of people.
So, uh, what, what are the hours again, Director?
The hours are eleven AM to two PM, and I do need to say, bring your own basket, please, we do not provide baskets.
Okay. All right, because it's really going to be an Easter egg hunt, the face painting, pictures with Easter bunny.
Bunny gonna be jumping around.
A whole lot of stuff going on, but we want folks to get there early.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
We can play the video.
Rockdale County is on the move. We are glad to see another county facility protected and improved. The Olivia Haydel Senior Center now has a brand new roof. Our valued seniors and staff do so much good here, and now they won't have to worry about roof leaks. The future is now, here in Rockdale County, Georgia.
Thank you, so I did want to touch on that. Um, we had some inclement weather, we've had several, you know, cases of inclement weather, but one in particular day, uh, caused some roof damage, and the water was leaking like on the food line where we serve hot food. So Deputy Director Morgan, she called me, reached out to Director Hammer. He and I talked immediately, and, um, I, I do want to really thank General Services for getting that done so quickly because it was very important, it was a safety issue, a health issue with the water leaking by the food. So we really appreciate, uh, you, Director Hammer, and your team for getting that done so quickly.
I, I want to, Commissioners, uh, Commissioner Washington, you alluded to this earlier. This is just another opportunity for people to see where the money is going, how we're spending the money. Uh, we all know that we have a very robust, uh, senior service center where folks are very active. And it means a lot to them to be able to go to the facility, uh, it needs to be safe. Uh, you talked about the fact that, um, the leak, the roof leak due to the inclement weather was, uh, in the area of the food line. All of that is, is critically important. The, the thing is, Commissioners, there is so much work that we do and our teams do that we haven't always captured, uh, the story of, and, and, and we've got to do a, a better job telling our story about what we're doing. That's, that's a great response to show me the money, because it costs money to get that done. And an act of Mother Nature can come anytime. Mother Nature can do something anytime that, that's not in the budget. That's, has not been appropriate. If a tree falls on your house tonight, you didn't have plans to call the Tree Service and Serve Pro or Serve Master and all those people that you're going to now have to figure out where you're going to get the money. So, um, this is the kind of thing that's happening in addition to, uh, being proactive. Sometimes we have to be, we're forced to be reactive. The county doesn't get discounts. Uh, when inflation came and all of what's happening that's in the community, it impacts food costs, um, paying salaries for employees, all of that, because we had to. So anyway, I just want to say that I, I, I really appreciate, um, the very nature of this video because, um, uh, it speaks to how we take care and, and where we prioritize our seniors. But it also talks about, um, immediate maintenance and sometimes reacting, uh, to things that are out of our control, uh, that happen. So that's very important, thank you for sharing that. And again, thanks to you and Director Hammer from General Services, uh, because at any given moment, something can happen at any one of our facilities, and we've got to figure out what we have to do to keep it moving, uh, and to keep the county moving in the right direction. Thank you so much.
And thank you, uh, Director Mears, for your team for getting that captured for us so that we could show it, yeah.
A collaboration between three departments, Parks and Recreation, General Services, and Public Relations, that's what it's all about.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Director. Uh, next up, I want to, um, I'm going to call up Ms. Stacy Bonner Lewis. Uh, Ms. Lewis is going to come up and tell us as we spirit in the month of March and continue to talk about our seniors and what we're doing to celebrate our seniors.
Yes, thank you, uh, Chairman, and good morning, Madam Commissioners. I am so excited, good morning, to be the coordinator for Chairman Izz's fifteenth annual Linda Ham. Easter, we know is early this year, it's March the thirty-first, so we are collecting hams yesterday, okay? So we need hams, we need hams, hams, hams for our seniors. They look forward to receiving hams from us every year, or actually for fifteen years. So if you could, please donate one or two hams. We have two different drop-off locations. So, if you could, please donate one or two hams. We have two different drop-off locations. At the Olivia, Olivia Haydel Center, the Senior Center, you can drop your ham off there, as well as Ford Courtesy. They always participate and collaborate with us regarding the turkeys, and now it's for the hams. So, we need hams to be donated as well as volunteers, and I'm gonna be reaching out to students once again to help us actually give the hams to our seniors, which will be on Palm Sunday, March the twenty-fourth. So, we're collecting hams from now until March the twenty-third. Please drop off a ham, take a picture. Feel free to email me your picture. I would love to post it. Once again, any organizations, committees, groups, if you want me to come, take the picture. I will take the picture, but we want to post it, and this is for our seniors.
Well, Ms. Lewis, thank you so much. You did a fantastic and a phenomenal job with the turkey giveaway this past Thanksgiving, and here we are now, and it's almost just amazing to believe that it's fifteen years. We've been doing this for fifteen consecutive years. We did it all through the pandemic. We made sure that on Palm Sunday, the senior citizens in Rockdale County have the ham. And let me just be clear about something, too. These are donations from the community. We don't use taxpayers' dollars to go buy hams and give away. Our citizens in Rockdale County for the past fifteen years have gone by the dealerships and dropped off the hams. As she mentioned, several different organizations, groups, businesses all throughout the county, they donate and contribute these hams so that on Palm Sunday, we can give them out to our seniors. They have them ready for Easter Sunday dinner. But this is a big deal, and we're encouraging anyone that's watching and listening to this broadcast, if you have a benevolent heart and you have the extra cash to be able to pick up Easter ham this year, and listen, we want frozen hams, so we did have one year, somebody went and got a really nice glazed honey baked ham. Well, we had to go ahead and serve that right away because we couldn't put it in the deep freezer. We need frozen hams, and most of these hams are already fully cooked, but they're frozen, so I want to be clear about that. And we're not doing anything other than, we're not doing the trimmings, just the ham. The program is called Land a Ham. So, and the last thing I want to do, mention, Ms. Lewis, you did a great job incorporating the youth, the young people. I think it's so important that they understand the essence of Bill, of giving back, teaching the young people, Ms., to give back, and that was a very good look during the Thanksgiving holiday, and we look forward to seeing our young people out again for the Linda Hamm event on Palm Sunday. And now, this kicks off, the actual giveaway is on the twenty-fourth. Is it three PM?
Yes, at three PM. At the Olivia Haydel Center is when we're gonna give the seniors the hams.
Twelve forty Dogwood Drive at the Olivia Haydel Center. Be sure that you're there early. We've been doing it fifteen years. The cars, this year, the last year, the traffic was all the way out to West Avenue. I mean, we had a, and this, let me, this is a first come, first served type event. So, once the last ham is given out, it's a wrap. It's a done deal. We're looking forward to folks really contributing this year and making sure, and you mentioned it, Easter comes early this year. Absolutely. Ms. Lewis, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I wanted to make a quick announcement. Apparently, we're having some streaming issues, Facebook and Meta and this and that, so I think we have crashed. I don't think we are live streaming right now, so just wanted to make sure that.
Well, I appreciate you sharing. That's just like technology, and we were talking about the impact of Mother Nature just a little while ago, things that are out of our control. Well, that's okay. We'll do it like we did it in the seventies and the eighties. We'll keep on trucking.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. So, next up, I do want to, yes, you don't remember. That's okay.
We will guide you. We will guide you.
We'll call up Deputy Director Jamison from RWR, and he's also serving as the Chief Liaison, Assistant Director Kelly out in RDOT. Deputy Director Jamison.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Madam Commissioners.
Morning.
So, you know, on February, early February, I got a call from Phil the Groundhog, and he was distraught that he did not see his shadow, and he told me that we'd be having an early spring. And so, because we were having an early spring, our CIT team decided to start spring cleaning a little early.
CIT.
And so, our Community Improvement Team, led by Mr. Corey Brown. So, this weekend, if you can run that, our PR team got this together for us. We appreciate that on such short notice. So, this is phenomenal because this weekend, last weekend, and this weekend, our Community Improvement Team, led by Mr. Corey Brown, they've been out early spring cleaning our community, and we wanted to invite our citizens to, don't just wait for our CIT team to get out there, CIT team to get out there, but to join us. We had a early email about a few weeks ago from a resident right there in the River Chase community, and she had talked about Mr. Corey Brown and Mr. Evan Thompson and how responsive they were and how they were actually joining in this idea of getting out in our community and spree clean early. And so, we're really excited because one of the things we understand about our community, many times when you see something and you say something, you're only talking about what's bad. And so, we also want to invite our community, when they see something very well, something going on well, to say something about that also. And so, they were right there at the Millstead area of this. They were in front of Lowe's, the Cherry Hill subdivision, and so, right now, I actually invited Mr. Brown to be with us today, but he said, Deputy Director Jamison, we're busy. We are.
No one's surprised.
He's a man about his business, and so, they're actually, he and his crews are at Country Walk in the Fieldstone neighborhood. They're actually putting up not just cleaning, they're putting up some barricades because they're trying to be proactive with people littering and dumping, doing some illegal dumping. And so, we really want to celebrate them. It's a poor duck that won't praise its own pond, and a poor dog that won't wag its own tail, and so, we celebrate our Community Improvement Team and a poor frog that won't praise its own pond also. I saw you, Commissioner. But we want to make sure that we're celebrating our team here because these are our tax dollars at work. These are our people who are out there putting their boots to the ground, making sure that Rockdale is not just a wonderful place to live, work, and play, but it's also a beautiful place to live, work, and play, and so, we celebrate them.
We certainly appreciate this update. This is, and let me say this, Commissioners, don't get confused. This is totally separate and in addition to what code enforcement does with the War on Litter, which is coming up, and I think that date is April, is, what's the, April thirteenth? So, we've got the War on Litter coming up as well, as we do the spring version of the War on Litter. We do twice a year. We do the spring version as well as the fall version of War on Litter, but this is a different effort by our Community Improvement Team to go into these areas where there is blight and trash and debris to make certain that we are addressing these issues and having, as you mentioned, everybody knows Mr. Corey Brown and the way that he works with a strong level of work ethic to make sure that the job gets done. So, we certainly do appreciate that. Is there anything else from your area that, a point of interest that you wanted to share with us this morning?
No, sir. I think we just want to make sure that we're inviting the community to join us. You don't have to wait. We can start right now, and so, we want to make sure everybody's very clear that this is a community effort, but it's being led by our workers here, our Community Improvement Team and Mr. Brown and team. So, we certainly appreciate everything that everyone in advance will lend a hand in this, in this time, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. So, and thank you to our Community Improvement Team, Mr. Corey Brown and his team of folks that are out in the community doing the work. I had a chance on yesterday to go to Country Walk on other business, and while I was there, I saw the Community Improvement trucks. They were everywhere addressing some of the issues as Deputy Director Jamison made mention of this morning. The next thing I do want to talk about is our upcoming State of the County Address. It's gonna take place on Thursday, March the twenty-eighth, right next door, nine oh three Main Street, right here at the Rockdale Auditorium. Again, that's March the twenty-eighth. That's Thursday morning. Doors open at eight AM, and the event will start at nine AM, the State of the County Address. We'll make sure that we're giving you an update about not just where we are. We're gonna talk about currently where we are, but we'll talk more about where we're going as a community. And I think this is an opportunity to show the public and to showcase the work that the county has been doing over the last twelve months, talking about all of the improvements and the pivot progress here in Rockdale County. Oftentimes, I mentioned it earlier, people say, show me the money. We're gonna show you the money. We're gonna show you your money and where your tax dollars are currently being spent and some of the future projects that we have here in Rockdale County. Yes, it's open to the public. Again, the doors are open at eight AM, and the event starts at nine AM on March the twenty-eighth. So, our State of the County Address. I think I have covered, I want to make sure that we're not omitting anything. I know we have talent management represented this morning, and I did receive on yesterday from Mr. Walker, our Health and Wellness, information about Rockdale employees participating in the Peachtree Road Race again this year. Do you have anything you'd like to add and share regarding that, that particular event? Is all of our employees will be, come on up. Come on up. Yes, ma'am. One thing about coming to these board meetings, you gotta always be ready because you just never know. The chairman has submitted a call on you, but she stays ready. She's a natural leader. Talk to us.
Yes, so absolutely. Good morning, Commissioner, Madam Commissioners. So, the Peachtree Road Race, we are excited again to be able to participate, so we are gearing up and getting ready for that. So, there will be some training sessions for those who might need a little, you know, physical refresher.
A little tighten up.
A little tighten up, absolutely. In addition to that, we are actually getting ready for our Super Rock Workshop, which is our supervisor training initiative to give our employees an opportunity to learn everything they need to be able to serve the citizens. So, we're actually gonna be having that for our supervisors at Costly Mill Park on the seventh and eighth, and so, we're super excited about that. Executive Director Holmes would definitely want everyone to know that that is initiative that we're pushing as a part of our new Rockdale University. So, if anybody wanted to get some additional information, I can definitely provide that as well.
And, you know, you all unveiled last Thursday, the Rockdale University, which is designed for our employees. It's career development and learning. The key word was learning. I paid attention. As we're trying to make sure, here's the thing, Commissioners, we're doing succession planning now. A good number of our employees are retiring and moving out, and they're coming to the point, to the end of their tenure. Talent management cannot wait until positions are empty or vacant, should I say. We have to start looking at talent within our organization now and getting people ready to take the ham and to be able to lead us on into the future. Tell us a little bit more about Rockdale University.
So, Rockdale University, we are super, super excited in regards to Rockdale University. It is going to be our premier ability to make sure that all these employees that are in the roles that they are currently in, as well as those who are looking to grow within the county, that they have the opportunities and the skill set that they need in order to provide the services. So, everything from succession planning to learning development and coaching, we're going to be able to have beefed-up tuition reimbursement policies, everything tied to make sure that these employees have the opportunity to grow within Rockdale. So, we want to be proactive. We want to be able to keep these employees here in Rockdale, and so, in order to do that, we need to be able to give them the tools and resources to grow. So, we're excited about that, and this, it comes with a whole, our ADP, which is our HRIS system, is going to actually have a boosted learning management system, so we'll be able to provide them as well as the technical piece on learning, videos, modules, and creating plans for them to be able to grow within the county.
I'm so proud, Commissioners, that we are an organization that invests in our workforce. The workforce is changing, and one of the things, when they unveiled it last Thursday, that really stood out, and you're hearing a lot of this from HR directors from every industry, the importance of soft skills. There's, this workforce now is a lot different. I won't say a little different. It's a lot different. And the spirit of entitlement is just looming all over the place, and having people who understand the importance of soft skills, I really shouldn't have to tell you to be to work on time. I really shouldn't have to tell you to really not to half-step, and I can't even use that phrase, Bill, half-step, because folk don't know what half-step really means. In other words, if you're gonna do the job, do the job all the way. There's no halfway. You gotta put it all in. But we're now at a point, from a leadership standpoint, we have to teach this.
Yes.
We have to live it by example, but we have to teach this and explain it. Soft skills are very, very critical because, again, there's a new workforce of people out here, and when we sit back and assume that people will work the way a lot of us have worked in the past, that's just not the way it is. And in addition to the soft skills, let me go move forward. I'm gonna talk a little bit about old school, but let me talk about a new school. It's the fact that technology is evolving constantly, and to make sure that, as she stated, giving our workforce the tools and the resources needed to stay on the cutting edge of making sure that we're moving Rockdale, even if it's a piece of equipment such as a tractor. The tractor that they was riding in the eighties is a whole different tractor in 2024. The fire truck, they were, they don't ride on the back of a fire truck anymore. Nobody, that's not safe. You remember, they were riding on the back of the fire truck in the seventies and eighties. They're not doing that now. So, it's a whole different type of, they don't even slide down a, they don't have a brass pole. This new Fire Station Number Ten, Director Simpkins out on one thirty-eight North, it won't have a brass pole for anybody to slide down. They don't do that anymore. So, I'm breaking it down because I need people to understand the importance of the Rockdale University, of keeping people and training our folks, learning, keeping them on the cutting edge of technology, but certainly talking about the importance of those soft skills and making sure that we have people who are, can pass the agility test, who can pass the aptitude test. And I think Executive Director Mims was telling me, there's a video of some type. Is that what you're telling me, Executive Director?
I was gonna tell you about the fire service.
Yes, thanks. Talent management, y'all, let's give talent management a round of applause.
Thank you, Chairman.
Absolutely, absolutely. Sometimes I can get a little caught up, but I just, I just want to, you know, what, listen, let me tell you.
We never knew.
As the good old church folks would say, don't charge it to my head, charge it to my heart. Absolutely. But we are, listen, March is Women's History Month. We did a lot of celebration last month, the month of February. We had twenty-nine days to celebrate Black History. But, well, we moved on now. It's March. March is Women's History Month, and we have a presentation that will highlight the phenomenal work that women are doing, and this really talks about what's happening in our fire industry across the country. And Chief McDaniel, come on, make your way to the podium because once the video is done, I want you to give some data and insight to this because, no, I can't tell it the way you can tell it. Yes, indeed. We'll watch the video, and then we'll hear from Chief McDaniel.
It's not a video.
Okay, is it a video?
No, it's an article.
It's just an article. Okay, all right, very good. Tell us about this article, Chief.
With that, the article is blazing, women blazing in fire service, and if we can start right there with Rosemary Cloud. Rosemary Cloud retired from the Atlanta Fire Rescue Department and went on to become the first African-American woman Fire Chief for the city of East Point in two thousand and two. And three, four years later, as you stroll up, Toni Washington is in her seventh, fourteenth year as Fire Chief for the city of Decatur, and if you can scroll on up. Yes, there's Marion McDaniel, Fire Chief of Rockdale County Fire Rescue, yes. And there's also one more. And Latasha Clemmons is the Fire Chief for the city of Forest Park. So, here in the state of Georgia, you have four women, three currently serving as Fire Chiefs, one that's blazed the trail for all of us to be here today, Rosemary Cloud, the very first one in two thousand. Rosemary Cloud, the very first one in two thousand and two, and eighteen years later, on December eighth, twenty twenty, I was appointed the twelfth African American woman to achieve the rank of Fire Chief. So it's huge, women are doing great things. Of the over three hundred thou- three hundred and seventy thousand career firefighters in the United States, only a four percent are women. So we're constantly looking for young ladies of all race, all ethnic to come into the fire service. It's a great profession and as you see, we're doing great things.
Well, Chief, you've done some phenomenal work here in Rockdale County and, uh, we are very proud of the work that you've done. Uh, you've got some new, uh, projects and concepts, I won't let the cat out of the bag, that are coming up really, really soon that we're going to be accelerating and we're excited about here in Rockdale County. But I want to zone back in, zoom back in Commissioners on the fact that this is, uh, Women's, uh, History Month here. And that's the purpose of us highlighting this article, talking about the phenomenal work of women in so many different industries. Uh, I talked about this on Sunday at one of the local churches that, um, I couldn't imagine a world, uh, without a woman. Uh, women are the backbone of, of, of families and every industry and every walk of life in terms of, uh, you know, I even, I even referenced, uh, James Brown's song, yeah. He said, "This is a man world," but immediately he said, "It wouldn't be nothing without a woman or a girl." So I, 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 I agree with Brother Brown, that, that I wouldn't even want to imagine living in a world without women, the tremendous amount of work. And a few years ago, I don't know Executive Director Rutledge, what year it was, but I think somewhere between twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, uh, the local uncommon ground newspaper highlighted the number of women in Rockdale County organizational, uh, government that are in leadership roles here in our community. Uh, but even in Rockdale County, uh, we do the, uh, Rockin' Women event every other year and there are so many women that are doing tremendous and wonderful things inside of our community. We appreciate you, we appreciate all of the women in Rockdale County, uh, who are serving in multiple capacities to make sure that Rockdale County is moving forward. And let's give our women a round of applause, absolutely, yes, yes. I don't know the percentage, uh, miss, I, I don't know the percentage right off the top of my head of the number of women that are part of our workforce. And then another number of those who are in leadership roles. And perhaps as we move through this month, we can get that information and we can actually talk about, uh, the wonderful work that women are doing. And I want to encourage my two colleagues, Commissioner Washington and Commissioner Williams, just like we highlighted, uh, folks during Black History Month, as we prepare to come back into this, uh, uh, Assembly Hall the next time for our meeting, let's talk more about, uh, some of the fantastic things that women are doing. And you pick your favorite woman or two or three and let's talk about what they're, we're doing, absolutely. But Chief, any, uh, lasting comments? I, I, I will ask you because, uh, I passed, uh, Station Ten and I saw the hanging of the red doors and I knew that we are ahead of schedule out there.
We are ahead of schedule, however, I don't want, uh, Director Hammer to pass out, so I will not say hopefully we will open before June. I am hoping that we will, however, right now we're still looking at June as an opening, uh, which we're hoping for April or May. Yeah, yeah, June, June, June. So yeah, it's looking good and I invite you all to ride up one thirty eight going north, that we're really excited about it. And as you said, we have a lot of great other things coming from Rockdale County Fire Rescue.
Well, we certainly do appreciate, again, your leadership and what you all are doing and we're sitting on the edge of our seats for this upcoming announcement about the other projects that you have to unveil here in Rockdale County. Thank you, so let's give another round of applause.
Thank you.
Yes. Commissioners, very briefly, I want to go back, uh, when Deputy Director Jamison was here talking about the work that Mr. Corey Brown and the, uh, Community Improvement Team, I, I, I failed to mention that, uh, last weekend, of course, they were out. I, you know, I'm always getting these text messages from citizens, uh, and, uh, I did receive a text. It was, it was twofold, uh, it was a praise report and a little bit of a, of a complaint. Uh, the praise report, uh, the lady was truly excited to see them out and she said, "They're out here, they're cleaning it up, they're doing a great job." And then she went and said, "But I'm late for my hair appointment."
Well.
She was, she said they, because I've had to, she had to wait in the line, we've got, uh, sign crews out there just directing the traffic. But I really appreciated her text, let me tell you why. Because if you all remember, it was just the other week, we were talking about folks driving too fast through work zones and not paying attention. I think it was Director Simpkins that was talking about the workout, uh, Director, uh, Deputy Director Jamison that was talking about the workout at, at, uh, Sunrise, uh, Lakeview Estates. People moving too fast through the work zone and I, I reminded folks to please slow down for the blue light, the red light on the fire truck and the yellow amber light of multiple utilities that are out in Rockdale County. People just, they drive and they, they, it, it, and we want to make sure that folks are safe. So I do appreciate the fact you're getting people attention, uh, uh, and, and, and Deputy Director Jamison, am I correct? Uh, the CIT crew will be back out again this weekend, absolutely. Uh, so Director Morgan, uh, I, I understand that we may be getting a little bit of, uh, wet weather this week and, and, and things are going to be changing in the, in the few hours ahead, can you speak to that? Uh, he's our year made director.
Yes, sir, you are correct, next five days, we're going to be very wet. Uh, starting this afternoon and tomorrow morning, um, we will get between, Rockdale County and our area will get between one and two inches of rain. Starting on Friday through Saturday, we will be getting three plus inches of rain. So over the next five days, our area is going to get, um, five inches or more of rain. Our rivers and creeks are going to rise quickly, the ground is going to be wet and, um, people just need to be very careful, slowing down driving, being aware of their surroundings. Uh, the fortunate thing about this is we're not expecting any severe weather or wind, so we're hoping we'll have the minimal amount of trees or power lines down. So it is a rain event only is what they're predicting right now, but just be aware. And the big thing that the whole state of Georgia and the whole FEMA and GMA, uh, says is if you see standing water in the road, turn around, don't drown, because you don't know what's under that water in the roadway, so just be careful.
Turn around, don't drown. You, you know, uh, Commissioners, every time I think about calling up Director Morgan, I almost always have to brace myself because he has a unique way with words. Uh, did you hear what he started out with? He said, "We about to get wet, uh, here in Rockdale County." Now, I knew exactly what you meant, you talk about amount of rain that, that's being forecasted, but you really took us, the moment you said that, I could literally see the raindrops falling. Uh, who was it that sung the song, was it Brooke Bitten, Rainy Night in Georgia? Uh, i- 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 is there old school left in here? Chief Mc, was it Brooke Bitten, Rainy Night in Georgia? Or was it Gladys Knight, or both of them? But, so Director, uh, stay with me Commissioner Washington.
I was on the midnight train.
Train tracks will be running as normal, the rain will not affect them.
Right, right, I need you to know your history now. But, um, so Director, what you are telling us that we're really not expecting heavy winds or anything like that. I, I will say this because I, I was looking at Director Simpkins as you were talking. Typically, we get a good number of calls from residents when there's a torrential downpouring of rain and the work that they're doing through stormwater management, uh, to mitigate some of the issues that are all around the county. Uh, and I have been paying attention to the retention ponds and the detention ponds that have been cleaned out. Uh, one that stood right out at me, if you didn't see it the other day, uh, over at, uh, JP Car. I mean, he, that, you can see all the way to the box, thank you Director Morgan, yes, sir.
Can I say one thing?
Yes, sir.
And this is for stormwater, I've been in this position for now over twelve years. In the last three to four years, I have seen a marked difference and reduction in the amount of standing water calls we have and I appreciate their work in the field.
Yes, thank you for that, thank you, absolutely, absolutely. Director Simpkins, come on up, come on up, because, uh, no one can promote you better than yourself and your department and the work that you all are doing in stormwater. I want you to come on up and, uh, the, the, now, listen, uh, he's another one, so just give us, get in and get out.
Uh, good, good morning, Madam, Madam Commissioners, Mr. Chairman. Uh, yes, um, a, a proactivity is one thing. Um, I, I stand really, really strong on being proactive. Uh, being proactive really helps us to not have to be reactive when it's pouring down rain and roads are already overtopping and flooding and things of that nature. Uh, we make great strides in keeping our vac truck up and running to where it's able to clean out some of these pipe systems. Um, and we also have basically a list of areas that are typically low lying areas throughout the county, which we make sure that we address and that they are still clean before these rain events come through. So I think just having an organized approach to stormwater and maintenance is helping us to, to decrease some of these calls.
Well, you, you, talk about your boots on the ground and give folks a little bit more description as to, you've got a crew that's coming out of Tatum Road every morning, tell us about that. And then you, you talked a little bit about the vac truck.
Right, right, well, at our crews, we have three crews, um, seven men apiece, um, foremen, heavy equipment operators and also utility workers. And we have, like I said, an organized approach, we have a list of areas where we dispatched them to before every rain event to ensure that ditches are open, pipes, culverts that traverse, that under these roadways are open. And, you know, we're just out here getting the work done, you know. The, the work, you will see the results and the, 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 the decreasing phone calls that Director Morgan talked about is what, you know, is a result, direct result of the work that we're doing. So, you know, I, believe it or not, I don't really do a lot of talking, I just kind of like to let the work speak for itself. So, you know, we're, we're just doing what we do, so to speak.
Well, Director Simpkins, uh, thank you, uh, and, and thanks, hats off to folks Martin, Martin Ellis and Michael Webb and Mr. Brooks, uh, you've got several of folks that, they take their jobs very seriously. Let, let me just say this real quick, we talk so much about infrastructure improvements and upgrades, but this is a tremendous wo- work and I really appreciate the longevity of Director Morgan, uh, talking about what he's noticed himself. If we don't do this work, uh, from an infrastructure standpoint in Rockdale County, uh, fire trucks, police cars, ambulance, residents and motorists will be sliding all over the community with flooded roads and flooded roadways and we'd have multiple areas of, of, of folks, uh, yards looking like lake area. Uh, this work takes time and takes money and I have to make mention, forty years of neglect, we're still playing catch up. There wasn't a storm water management system in place many, many years ago, we didn't start this until twenty seventeen. So I, I, the, the amount of work that you all are doing, uh, and the vac truck, I, I think I missed that piece, that I was multitasking at the time. Tell me about that vac truck that, uh, the lady called and she says, she, she didn't know what it was. Uh, I think it was the Windridge subdivision. She called and said, "There's a truck out here and it's making a lot of noise." And, and, uh, uh, and, and, and I was, I totally, it was the vac, tell us about the vac.
Right, well, basically, what, what the vac truck is, it's basically if you have a, a, a vacuum cleaner in your home, that vac truck is basically a big vacuum cleaner for, but it's for our stormwater pipes in through, in our, in Rockdale. So we take that truck out and it has a big hose on the back to where we can stick that hose down into catch basins to suck out the leaf debris that we don't want citizens throwing out and blowing out into the, the street because it ends up in our stormwater infrastructure and we have to come in and suck those leaves and all that yard debris out. You know, the, the truck also has a hose on it that is able to get the sediment out of pipes. You know, a lot of times, water will pick up speed and it, it takes all this dirt and sediment and trash and stuff and then when the water slows down, the sediment drops out into our pipes throughout Rockdale County. So that truck is able to go in and shoot high pressure water out and then we suck the water and the sediment out of these pipes, which opens them back up. A lot of times when roads overtop, there are times when we get rain events that are just very large amounts of water and if a conveyance is not sized to handle that amount of water, then roadways end up overtopping for a period of time till the pipe can catch up. So that's one thing we're also looking at is upgrading a lot of the infrastructure here to handle some of these larger rain events due to climate change that we've been getting, uh, recently.
I, I do want to, uh, give a last comment on this one, a, a big shout out, if you would, to, uh, Ms. Maria Flint, who serves as our, uh, education utility, uh, utility education specialist. She works with both RWR as well as, uh, stormwater management and she is literally all over this county educating people. When you talked about the vacuum truck and the fact that it vacuums and cleans out culverts and drains and whatnot, I do remember Commissioners, when we first invested in that vehicle several years ago, they brought in photos of pipes, uh, bicycles and all kinds of debris uh, that people literally are putting, uh, down the storm drain. You don't, you can't, that stuff clogs up the system and it costs money. So to have a person who's focusing, she works with the young people, she works with our senior citizens, working with the entire community, educating them on what not to do and it has made a tremendous difference. We're going to have her in, uh, real soon so we can hear exactly, uh, from her, but she has done a fantastic job hitting the ground running all over, she goes to so many, um, HOAs and, and, and over, she spends a lot of time in our local schools educating our young people because this is something folks don't really think about, but what you have to educate. You can't put anything down the drain or down the toilet for that matter. Uh, so that is very important and she's doing a great job with that. Director Simpkins, are there any, uh, last comments you do want to make before you, uh, I'm going to give you that, uh, before you leave?
I appreciate it and, and it only take fifteen minutes what I'm about to say right now, I'm just kidding, I'm just joking, just a joke. I, I want to say, um, and, and I'm sure I speak on, on all of the other, on behalf of all the other directors, one of the biggest joys about being a director for me is being able to come into stormwater management and truly affect change, is to truly come in, change the environment, you know, change, just change and improve things. And so I want to really thank the Commissioners, thank you Mr. Chairman, just for the opportunity to be able to come in and affect change in Rockdale County. I think, you know, we hear it, we hear it every day about not only my department, but just all of the, the departments and, and I think that's just a credit to the directors that you all have put in place, so I thank you for the opportunity.
Uh, very good, last but not least, uh, and let's give the, the stormwater management a round of applause, the work they're doing, absolutely.
Can I say something about?
Go right ahead Commissioner.
Um, you know, I started when we did the stormwater department and I remember our first retreat when they told us how much money it was going to cost and how much we had, how many projects it was going to take to get it up and just get caught up. And so I remember distinctly that when they told us the amount of money and all the projects, Commissioner Williams just started putting up her stuff, she just packed up and was ready to go home because it was, it was mind boggling. But the fact that seven years later, we have taken it piece by piece and we still have a lot to go, but come up with a plan to start rectifying and start getting things in order and day by day, piece by piece, we are definitely focused, we understand that there's a problem and things break down before we can get to them because the infrastructure is old. But just the fact that we have been so concerted and put so much effort and time and money to implement the plan and get it going is a testament to the staff and the leadership, so thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you Commissioner, thank you Director. Uh, Director Joko from, uh, Joko from Planning and Development, come on up and tell us what's going on in the area of, uh, 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 planning and development and y'all made some improvements with customer service. I, I'm really excited about the improvements in terms of how folks are interacting with your front counter folks and the flow and the process flow of the work coming through, um, planning and development. What are the top three things you really want, because you're talking to, what are the top three things that you want folks to know about the new things you're doing over in Planning and Development?
Good morning Chairman.
Good morning.
Good morning Lady Commissioners, how are you? Excellent, absolutely. Well, I won't take up time, Simpkins already took up half my time, so I'm just going to move right into it. Uh, we're super excited about the front office, right now we're taking in cards, customer service cards.
office. Right now, we're taking in cards, customer service cards. As Deputy Director Jamison said, it's easy for everybody. We talk about when things go wrong, but we like to be able to talk about things that go right. Consistently, what we're hearing from, from
the customer service cards that we're receiving is the time and service, the quality of our service, the time that we're taking with our citizens to go through their applications. And we're actually improving really on our turnaround time, on our communications, even if there are going to be delays, we find a way to let you know that we are working on it, letting you know where we stand. We're looking forward to more improvements with technology to be able to actually reach out to you guys specifically on your phones and your computers. So we're really super excited about the front office. We have almost tripled the amount of people coming to our front office from the time that I've started, from about 37 to 35, 35 to 37 people to almost 87 to 90 people coming in looking to do business and to develop here in Rockdale County. We're excited to meet them at their needs. We're excited to be able to make the permitting process a lot smoother. So stand by and stick with us. But so far, our ladies up front are doing a great job.
Well, well, we appreciate that, and we appreciate hearing that because we've had some, we, we have to admit, you know, leadership is ownership. We've had some growing pains in the area of planning and development. Director Joko, when she came on board, she had to really reestablish her team and reestablish the focus in terms of how we deliver service to our customers and our clients that come into Rockdale County. And I must say that she came in at a time where economic development had just boomed in Rockdale County. I was over there a couple of weeks ago, and I couldn't hardly get in the door. There were six or seven people waiting at the front counter. I had to kind of navigate myself through the crowd to get back to the back office back there. But we're certainly, continuous improvement is really what it's all about. Making sure that we're creating a pathway to move forward and that we're understanding that for our developers, time is money. And we're moving as expeditiously as we possibly can to get the permitting process tweaked down so we have a, a beautiful spirit of process engineering, but making sure that every person that's coming in the door and every one of our folks on the front counter understands that this is time-sensitive. In addition to being time-sensitive, we must dot I's and cross our T's because there's a legal process with this as well, with notices and permits and making sure with announcements that we're giving people the right information. So we really appreciate this update from you, Director.
Yes. And my last two things. All right. First of all, really want to thank you, Chairman Nusbut, for taking the time out. And in addition to all of the directors that came out for our HOA meeting that was hosted by Rockdale County's Code Enforcement, that meeting, we've been getting great response since that. It was an opportunity for us to really have a one-on-one, a close-knit surface, establishing our relationships with our HOA presidents. We want you to know that we're not here to riddle you with citations. We're really trying to educate you and to support you, to support your covenances, which are private, separate from what the county can do. But we also want to be able to provide you with the support that counties with you to maintain the property value that you have and to maintain your subdivisions. In concert with our chairman and our directors, we're able to meet and discuss with the HOA presidents, answer their questions, give them an opportunity to get good inside information to, to reestablish their HOAs, also to strengthen what their HOAs can do whenever they may have an outlying resident. So that's another thing that we plan to do quarterly and consistently to make sure that we maintain that relationship to and PND. And lastly, for PND, we're really super excited coming out of this first quarter to kind of talk to you about more outreach that we plan to do, more community engagement. We have really, really built up on our staff. We're actually looking for more ways to come on the community. I don't want to reveal our surprise yet, but we have a really, really great program we're trying to put together to continue to meet the needs of Rockdale County citizens with continuous community engagement, education, and full-time support from our staff. So I'll leave, I'll save the last piece for the next time that I'm on the microphone, but we have really been getting great response. We want to thank the citizens for their patience and for those that are still feeling frustrated, just give us a little bit more time. We hear you.
Director, thank you so much. Let's give Planning and Development a round of applause. Absolutely. Commissioners, Director Joko made reference to the HOA presidents meeting that we had with several of the HOA presidents across Rockdale County on last week. If you all recall, prior to COVID, we was meeting on a quarterly basis with a number of those HOA presidents throughout the county. But COVID put us at a standstill and of course did not allow us to be able to meet. We are re-implementing, bringing that back, and we had a, a, a crowd over at JP Car just last week, and they were fully engaged with several questions. Most Deputy Director Doug Chandler did a fantastic job facilitating and hosting that event and explaining and sharing with people what we're doing here in the county. And we had, all of our department directors were present to be able to answer questions. We had, I think it's Lieutenant Best from the Sheriff's Office, he was there as well, representing the Sheriff's Office. To be able to engage with our HOAs, to be, make sure that we're being proactive and that we can point them in the right direction about different things that are happening inside their subdivisions, things that impact their property values, and making sure that there is a relationship with Rockdale County. And they know who to call upon in the event they have, whether it's an incident or accidental, just, just seeking direction or have a question about something, making sure that we have them there. So that was a good event, and we certainly do appreciate that. And I'm so glad to hear that it will be a quarterly basis going forward so that we can stay engaged with our community. I'm not sure, but I think we've covered several areas this morning. Am I omitting anything that's pressing? Executive Director Rutledge, are there any announcements? Give, what about your legislative update? I mean, you have been, let me say this, there's a lot going on under the Gold Dome this year. I mean, a lot of stuff that's happening down there. I'm keeping up, and I get all of the emails from you and the updates. In addition to the stuff that I'm seeing on the news that's coming, that's happening, the legislators are in session. We already passed Crossover Day and they're trying to get toward the end. Give us an update.
So I think one of the highlights of this year is property tax. I think you see a bipartisan effort to help homeowners. And so what you will see is a plethora of bills that have been flying around since session started this year about property taxes. Now, what that will actually shake out to be remains to be seen. We, we've even seen the, the Speaker introduce legislation to reduce property taxes as well. So there's not many more days left in the session. Last signee die is March 28th, so we don't have much longer at all. But yeah, there's been a, a ton of bills. And just to be clear, just because your bill doesn't make it past Crossover Day, that doesn't necessarily mean it's over. It can come back in the form as an amendment to a other bill, or it could be a local bill. So don't let that fool you if something that you were crossing your fingers and lobbying on behalf of and hoping that it didn't pass, it can always come back. So yes, we have, we have a lot going on at the Capitol this year because, as you know, it's the second half of a biennial session, so they got to do or die this time.
Okay. All right. Very good. Well, she does a fantastic job as our Government Affairs Director, making sure that Rockdale, so we have, let me say this so citizens will be clear. In addition to having our state delegation of state representatives and state senators, we have a state lobbyist. In addition to that, we have our very own Director of Government Affairs to make sure that we don't skip a beat or miss an opportunity for information that's going to impact directly Rockdale County. Having somebody down on the floor who is a true Rockdale County person that understands legislation and can make sure that she is moving between our lobbyists as well as our state delegation to make sure that Rockdale County is, is fully represented. There is critically important. And that's another move that we made back in 2017, if you all remember, making Executive Director Rutledge our Government Affairs Director to make sure that Rockdale County is, is well-represented and that we don't get lost in the shuffle, because there's a big shuffle down under the Gold Dome. So thank you so much for that. Any other announcements, upcoming meetings, dates, or things that we need to be aware of before we close out this morning?
So the Board will be meeting, all Board meetings in the month of March, so every Tuesday. And then we have our zoning public hearing coming up on March 28th at 6:00 PM.
All right. Very good. Is there any need for executive session this morning?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Happy Tuesday, and this meeting is adjourned.